This is recording of the special board meeting, July 24th, 2023, of the West Valley School Board. And will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, I didn't read that. Don't think it's necessary, we have no public comment, yes, participation, obviously, so we'll go on to the first item there. Consideration of the resignation of trustee Justin Bowles and board vacancy announcement.
Make the motion to accept the resignation of Justin Bowles.
And would you also take minutes?
Oh, yes, again, yeah, now, two seconds minutes, I still need to do this.
I'll second that.
All right, I need discussion.
Was, I'm sorry, was the motion to open up the board vacancy too? I'm sorry, let's.
Well, we just. We could do, look to a combined motion.
Yeah, it's all one line.
So we'll accept the resignation of Justin Bowles and. At the board vacancy.
Second, any discussion?
I think the only thing on the, that we just need is, we have, that will, we just have to open it for like a certain window, I believe.
Yes. They submit letter of interest to the, by.
Well, I'm hoping that we can, I was gonna reach back out to the contacts from last time. Hopefully, we can, and that was a pretty, I was, you know, obviously impressed with T. Laura, but some of the others were also very good candidates. So hopefully, we can get a few of the other candidates to come back and fill that spot, so that would be.
So should we, um.
When's our meeting in August? So maybe we just have it, have them do it before that.
I think that'd be great.
It should be August the fourteenth. That gives us, that gives me a whole month, I don't, we need.
No, I think that's great, yeah.
A whole month?
Yeah, yeah.
Or maybe we have them, have it get to us by, like Friday the eleventh, how about Thursday the tenth, so then you could do the agenda on the eleventh for the meeting on the fourteenth?
How about, yes, that sounds good to me, we want to give them, we want to give them that long, and then we'll know if those other people don't apply, we can always get to them. If nobody else is applying.
Yeah, we also need to have, obviously, Cecilia.
She hasn't, that she must have them, I mean.
Hosted openly for other potential candidates.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, so, I guess it said, to the West Valley School District by, are we gonna say August the tenth? Yep, yep. All right, I guess that's, I'll sign this right now, and then that should be, we should be good to go, trustees. Any questions can be directed to the district, all right, let's go, let's go for August tenth. All right. Okay. I'm wondering, well. Cecilia's gonna be gone the first week in August. What, when is that, August 14th? I thought it's.
So, so. It's right around there.
It's something like that, okay, so there may be a time if people do, but they, that'll be on the internet, so we can pick it up. If people, I'm just thinking, if people do apply, we want, we don't want, we want to be sure and catch their names.
Oh, right.
And if you're not here, there may be issue.
Do we know when exactly she's gone or no?
Not for sure.
Well, she has a, a. Cell phone that should have the.
Yeah.
The email, so she should be able to at least forward the applicant's on.
Yeah, because she's gonna be gone for nine days in New York, baseball, baseball with her son, I guess.
Yeah, so wishing for those.
I, I thought she said the first week in August, so.
Well, the tenth is the second Thursday, so.
Yes, we should be fine. She should be okay, we should be able to catch up with everybody by then and have, hopefully, have interviews at our fourteenth meeting, have people come and give their presentation. Make, make a determination of a new board member, it sounds good. I don't, I don't, I'll forget them, obviously. All right, now, the budget finance update. I think we need to vote on that last one.
Yeah, well, and one thing we could do, I don't know, for the board vacancy announcement, is we could just add one board member to who they submitted to, beyond Cecilia's email. And that would be one option, if we're, like, if she's going to be completely absent.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
Maybe have it go to the chair.
I'm okay with that, yeah, so when she does that, when she makes the announcement, we'll just have her say that.
Yeah, it seems like.
Okay.
It's probably a good idea, like, overall, in general, to, to, that it comes.
I agree. To, to the clerk and, and, or, and, or.
I would say and. I'd say and, that she got a vote.
Okay. Right, and then we will be right on top of it, on the tenth, and we'll be able to get that all prepared for the meeting on fourteen. Okay, sounds like a deal, all right, I'll have Cecilia do that when she makes that announcement. Now, as far as schools.
So I think we need to.
We just need to do.
On the, on this?
On the resignation of Justin in the opening.
All right, is there any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of submitting, of accepting his resignation, and then announcing the vacancy until August the tenth. All those in favor?
I.
All's opposed, all right, unanimous, um, now, well, the next item, let's skip that one, I'd like to go on to that SAM renewal, because it's a good one. That's about $2,000, some, something like that, nineteen fifty or something, and once, once, once Richard is in the superintendent office, he can make that determination. Because it's beneath the threshold, I, I forget what the threshold is, eight or 10,000?
It's 10,000.
Is it 10? I thought we upped it, so, yeah, okay, so it's up to 10,000, and this is a, and you can look at it and feel if it's something that you want to use. It could be really helpful.
Yeah, I think it is, it's really helpful, my first year, I had a mentor through that, and it was really helpful.
Okay, so you're totally familiar with working with them, all right, so that one, we really don't need, make that, it's not an action item, it's a discussion item anyway, so. That, that one, you'll just go on. Then the superintendent onboarding evaluation. Laura, I'm gonna turn that over a few, because you've been working on that, you're like the committee of one on this, so it's great.
Well, I just woke up and realized, like, what are we gonna do about onboarding? We're kind of in, you know, unique waters, um, so I had asked Cecilia for the job description and then also evaluation. We've got a lot of, well, I guess, before I get into that, we have a lot of options for superintendent onboarding. You know, one of the things that Richard and I had talked about, and I had talked about with Callie and also Lori there, and the superintendent at Evergreen, and school administrators in Montana. Which ties in with that SAM renewal, was just some of the resources that are out there to help someone that's a new superintendent get up and running. And one of the cool parts about that SAM program is they have mentorship included, and for a superintendent, in their first year being a superintendent. That $720 that you pay for your membership dues to SAM, they scholarship you into the mentorship program if you want. So that covers a $500 cost right there, otherwise, you know, if Richard were in his second year or something, or, you know, whoever we chose. They wouldn't have access to that being covered, but basically, it's a cost savings for us, and then it gives you access to, like, OPI deadlines, how to fill out paperwork, mentorship. The regional meetings, which are supposed to be really good, you know, so big resources that way. The other thing too is, you know, one of the things that came up in our interview with both candidates was questions about evaluation and what they were hoping to see from that. And so I took a look at the job description, and I took a look at the evaluation, um, I don't know how everyone else feels, but to me, the evaluation seems wanting at best. It, you know, it, it goes over kind of like, acts as an educational leader of the schools, directs community relations activities, but it really. You know, it ties in with this job description, but the biggest thing for me was, is, you know, when we look at the job description, there's no mention of technology, which is critical in today's education. And then there's no mention of, let's see, where is my list? There's not much about professional development for staff, there's no mention of safety or security, there's no mention of real strong parental engagement, other than like notifying. Parents and community members of, like, when activities are happening, and there's literally nothing that touches on school climate and culture. And, you know, if we look at parent surveys, teacher surveys, student surveys, like, we're all citing our reasons of why we love West Valley, and it all comes down to climate and culture. And if we look at the job description, you know, it's pretty much kind of like the nuts and bolts of, like, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So I think if we're wanting to, A, set whoever we've hired, you know, in this case, Richard, up for success. And then, as we look at marketing in the future, if we're wanting to, you know, attract a candidate or cultivate. Climate and culture fostering qualities in a candidate, we probably want to have that in the job description and evaluation. So that was kind of what stood out to me, is something like, we might want to take a serious look at, of maybe massaging the job description a little bit and evaluation a little bit.
So just to clarify for the audience, that's, that's our evaluation that we.
For the superintendent, yes.
Used, so, yeah, I think. That's a great suggestion to adjust that a bit, or what we're looking for and enhance that, you know, along with the job description to kind of fit what we're looking for.
Yeah, I've been on school board, this will be my fifth year, my fourth, every single year, I will do the superintendent evaluation, it would say, in Stephanie, that time stepped, I mean, not a sincere, we've got to change that everybody. But then it would come the next year, we would have the same evaluation, so I'm just pleased to think that you're going into this, and I guess, while I'm concerned. I would like to make you a committee of one, if you're willing to do this, no, and then, you know, and bring us what you feel would be a superintendent evaluation. Rather than us all getting together and trying to, I mean, what you've got here is excellent. And as, rather than us in school board meetings spending a whole lot of time doing this, this is the kind of thing, I think, that goes really well to a committee, so. We don't do too many committees, but I would like to see you pursue that if you're willing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Sounds like you've already done a whole lot of work.
I mean, I was just trying to come up with, like, okay, are there gaps? I feel like there are, and then how can we maybe address it? But I think, you know, Richard and I can meet and kind of go over, like, what does he see the flaws being, what do I see the flaws being? If you guys identify anything looking at this, like, chime in, and then hopefully, we can have a document that works better for us moving forward.
Yeah, that survey's been an issue for a lot of years, I've heard, so I think it's great that, or not survey, but the evaluation for, I've heard about it for years, so.
It has been.
And we read, yeah.
Yeah, when you.
Well, I'll see, I'll see if I can get my hands on, you know, like, I know I can probably get Evergreens, but then also maybe school district fives and.
They should be all over the whole, yeah, yeah, just questioning.
Yeah, I'm good, right, yeah, okay, from the job description and.
What I, I think it's a great idea to loop in Richard, you know, just coming out of the principal position, and like, into this position new, like, I mean, you have a similar perspective of what you would want out of a superintendent, so. You can, in some ways, you know, seal your own fate.
Well, I think if you, if you work on, if you work on what we expect of the superintendent, and then, and then coordinate that with the evaluation, we couldn't, and that's.
That all needs to be done. We had, I know it came up in our last evaluation last year, of, to like, have the staff even evaluate, like, the superintendent, just to get, like, that input. I know it came up last year, and it would be good to have that knowledge of the board, like, before we're doing our evaluation, just to kind of. It's, you know, hard not being here every day and knowing how the interaction is going with.
Right, right, right.
I just think that's a key piece, too.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay, so, with that, I think we, we'll just.
Maybe with that, I wonder if we should, I, I'm open to comments from Bonnie and whatnot, on, like, the upflow of a report, how, how best to make sure that we get. You know, honest feedback, rather than. Kind of, you know, it's always hard to.
It's hard.
Hard to say bad things about your boss, so to speak.
Right, can we make him anonymous? Is that artificial?
Yeah, I can even. Make it, we've done goal forms before, that are.
We've been surveyed.
Yeah, I just wonder if it should be conducted through, like, the West Valley Teachers Association, and then, you know, in, instead of having, you know, potentially. You have the superintendent to control their own survey, so to speak.
A board control that.
Or the board can control it, or something. That could just kind of separate it.
All staff, rather than just.
And do an all staff.
Right, well, and you can shuffle responses too, so that you can't correlate, like, person number one answered, I mean, you can always pick out the details and be like, oh, I think I know who that is. But if you shuffle it, maybe creates anonymity there, that might, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, so. I never want to be person number one, like.
But that, those are details that we have a little way, way, you know, time to work out.
Plenty of time.
I think they're all really important.
Do you think a survey would be best, or like a group of people that you talk with, to, you know, like a selection of people from each area or school or?
Well, I, I think, I think a survey's revealing, I just don't feel like.
Goes to more people.
You don't get to speak and talk directly to everybody, you know, so, you know, you don't want to always respond to the most vocal. So I think, I think maybe a combination of the two that we could do.
I mean, I think it's gonna be.
Good idea.
On us too, to be, you know, visible and accessible and.
Is it, is it fair to hand that certain, the same survey questions we will be dealing with? Is it fair to hand those out to the school, the teachers, and the admin, and the pairs and whatever, could, is it fair to hand those out ahead of time? And have them just fill out that same, those same questionnaires, and then we take what comes in there, and then we look at that, and then we use that to evaluate. I mean, use the same questions, rather than ask them something else.
No, I think, I think you use the same questions, I agree.
I, I just assume have them be presented with the same paper that we're gonna use.
Oh, for evaluation.
Evaluation, because there's nothing secret about it.
Maybe.
Can't be, it's gotta be, yeah. One.
So, I guess, one thing I like about, I mean, if we're looking at, like, assessments, if we have, like, you know, how would you rank things? I think that's pretty good, open feedback can, I don't, kind of be tricky, because sometimes people are afraid of identifying.
Okay.
Themselves in certain areas, and I, I feel like maybe in this evaluation, then it puts some teachers in a position where they're gonna have to write a huge amount, and I want to, I, I don't know. Like, I could see flaws in terms of, like, if you've got someone that just wants to go through and check the boxes, and maybe only give a few comments where they see it really as being important. You might get more out of something like that, where you're, where you're hitting options and hitting feedback and kind of targeting different layers. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
It could follow the evaluation.
But it could, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
More of a scale.
Yes, with the same, with the same ideas.
Yeah.
Just, just in a scaled form, instead of in a written form, right, that's, yeah, that would be, that'd be great.
We have to recognize, I don't think Richard's technically accepted the position.
We have to give him a.
Too aggressive on the eval, so.
I have a verbal.
Set the hook.
A verbal, okay. We have a verbal, okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
A verbal acceptance, so, all right, um.
So do we want to do a motion on, we're all kind of spearheading the job.
We don't have that as a, as a, more, as a motion action item, actually, it's just a discussion item on this, right? It's just, these are all just discussion items right now, we don't accept for. Yeah.
Except for resignation and vacancy.
Yeah, we didn't put more possible motion there, I guess, assumed.
Well, she can at least do the legwork and then bring us.
Yeah.
She thinks that we can approve it at that point.
Yeah, there you go, I think that, that's where we're at now, just, as she's a committee, and we're gonna ask her to please look into this, make this board slated. Okay, sounds good, now, the budget, by itself. All I can say is. Cecilia said that she was busy tonight, couldn't make it, but she would have the up-to-date figures as best she could. Here. So, and I'm not really even sure what I'm reading, and maybe Jeff didn't like this.
Yeah, so. Again, yeah, I didn't have time to discuss with her previously, or an opportunity, so. But I would say it appears like, you know, this, these numbers are. You know, original appropriation. And the variance would be rounded to $16,000 more potentially than we anticipate with the. $250,000 shortfall.
That's 366,000?
I guess that's, that's like the, I could glean off this.
Do we know what the, what are, do we know what her numbers are up to date through, or? What needs to be finished still?
So they're, they're finalized, they're up to date through May. I believe they're still, obviously, preliminary through June, so, but June's, the, the challenge with June is it's a, it's a really large payroll. And then you kind of get all those end of the year kind of bills rolling through, so it's, it's one of those ones that can really kind of skew everything you're looking at. Which, again, we expected to be, you know, we had put that $250,000 out of general fund reserve in place to cover this, so one would expect that we would utilize it.
It's hard to know without Cecilia here.
Yeah, I mean, you can kind of read between the lines, because you got the, the original appropriation, the 5.04, which kind of links up to our. Obviously, links up to the actual revenues that we receive, then you got the current appropriation, which is 2.91, or 5.291 million, which is, again, 250,000 higher. And we're 16,000 beyond that, which, I mean, if you, if you link the dots, that would, that's what I would expect. A little bit of the question is, you know, we've had some. Obviously, with, you know, Cecilia's transition from the prior business manager, we've had some adjustments, we did have that audit. Danny and Downing has completed their audit, they did give us an unqualified opinion, which is the, the highest and cleanest audit opinion you can get, so there's no, there's no fraudulence or any, any concerns in regards to that. It's just this, you know, the money's being spent on things that, you know, need to be, the money needs to be spent on, so that's obviously comforting through this transition. There were some accounting adjustments that were made to, to basically bring our books into compliance, which is what you want to do, and that's expected when you kind of have that foot turnover. You know, that's nothing that you wouldn't expect, but I think, you know, I'll give Cecilia a pat on the back, unless she's not here for, you know, for getting that done, and, and working hard with Danny and Downing to get that cleaned up, so. But we still, you know, kind of, there's still kind of a question of where that, that reserve balances to some degree. So, you know, that's basically the money you can tap, and so we went to the states, basically, when you have those excess reserves at the end of the year, basically, funds that you haven't spent, you can basically put them into, into your general fund reserves or a specific. You know, reserve fund, to kind of save for the future, that had been built up to, I believe, just under 450,000 over time. Last year, obviously, a big reversal of that scenario, so we had to basically do a $250,000 draw out of that, so now you're net, now, now you're net down to 200-ish. So that's where a lot of the concern comes with this next fiscal year, obviously, we're discussing some necessary programs, curriculum programs that are, you know, at the end of the day, really aren't optional to, to much of a degree, right? But it looks like with staff and infrastructure we have right now, we'll still be operating with a general fund deficit and have to tap those reserves again. You know, to a smaller, a much smaller degree, obviously, because it's not there, but that's, that's kind of a lot of our focus, and we've talked about with the West Valley Teachers Association, just. Trying to, to structurally manage that deficit until we can kind of get back to the voters with a. You know, admit a properly run levy, that's properly marketed. And, you know, see what the community can do for us, and then if, if they vote yes, we can, we can kind of continue on with some of the status quo, if they vote no, then we'll have to, you know, consider adjusting for there, but. I mean, I guess I, I feel like this, you know, I can read at the bottom line a little bit about what, what this shows, hopefully, the actuals coming better, but the preliminary kind of seems to fit what we expected.
So I understood, I understood that Terry was looking at getting some okays for money to, for curriculum, that she was probably gonna need very soon, right? Yesterday, but.
Well, now you cast Michael on strike, so it's a little better.
Oh, that's literally.
That's true, right?
But, yeah. Typically, on a typical year, this stuff would be ready, and P.O. is ready to order July first, and be done before, like, by the time school's out, I would typically be here also.
Right, so what kind of figure are you looking at?
So, well, the packet you got last week, that has all of the, the spreadsheets, and then the email for the E.L.A. Are all, like we had discussed, and Tanya's here, if you have any more questions about those. I do have. I have some good news on the science area, um, I think I had mentioned to you that Montana State has combined or purchased Discovery Ed for the whole state. And we have purchased it as well, so I have visited with Discovery Ed, and we have a credit with them, we can't get a refund, I did ask. Of course, however, um, it could potentially save some on some of their line items for at least one year because of the credit. It looks like probably two of the three teachers are willing to try a pivot app, or application that's part of Discovery Ed, which is the online labs. That we were paying to use gizmos for, and so basically, teacher by teacher, we could reduce gizmos down and use the pivot app with that credit for some, for a couple of teachers. And we can also use the money for professional development, and with a new sixth grade science teacher and, and stuff, they were very excited about getting some professional development with that credit. We can also buy unit supplies, so I met with them today, and they have the list of all the supplies they can get for the unit kits, which is some of this money they need. Is their lab materials, so potentially, some of that lab material that they have on that spreadsheet could come out of this credit we have, which will save this year. Also, one of the larger purchases on this science, I kind of, that was the microscopes refurbishing and purchasing, which has been put off for a long time. So I went after that, and I have half of it paid for, and I applied for a grant for the other half. Which has been put off for a long time, so I went after that and I have half of it paid for, and I applied for a grant for the other half. So I know I've reduced it by at least by twelve hundred dollars.
Thank you.
That's great. So is that, like, is it? I haven't refurbished a microscope in a while, is it, is it, so if you got half of it paid for, like, you get half of it refurbished?
No, I mean, the, the people who said they'd pay half would kind of do a match.
They're doing a match, a grant match, okay.
So I'm hoping that I can get a grant to help with that match, you know, if it's a five hundred dollar grant, then, you know, as a district, we. Put in like five, six hundred, and we'd be able to get the microscopes fixed and get some newer ones. And make them accessible for everyone. The. The. Discovery Ed. I think I had mentioned it, it ends the R, so there's two platforms of Discovery Ed, which is, I'm trying to get more clarification. When I meet with them again tomorrow, but there's the textbook online, and then there's their whole platform of videos and labs and other things. And we have been paying for the full package, Montana paid for the videos and labs and all the resources. So the, the textbook isn't included, so. This is a year to review the science curriculum, you know, by our, running through the, the content. And so we will be looking at if we want to continue on with getting the online textbook. Or if it's just the videos is working fine or what, we're gonna dive into more of that this school year, but we don't have to worry about that till this spring.
Do you have any? Go ahead, so.
I was just gonna say, so where are we at? This is the science one, so do you have new numbers then on that one?
Um.
Where we're at?
So I just met with them this morning, the only thing I can tell you is, once we decide how to use that credit. Like I said, when you look at their core science costs. Some of those supplies then will, they're looking at getting from the kits as a credit, so then we wouldn't have to, you know, pay that out of pocket this year. And then, like I said, the. Microscopes. I've got half of that covered, and then the gizmos I would expect to be about half. About a thousand instead of twenty-one hundred, because the other teachers. Are interested in piloting the pivot, which is part of Discovery Ed.
And how much was that credit, did you think?
The credit is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight.
So it doesn't, I mean, it's not, so the pivot, it's like, okay, we don't have to pay them because we already paid them too much, but next year then we'll have to pay Discovery Ed. Presently, or will that all fall under the state?
Yeah, we're trying, so pivot is less expensive overall, okay, it's. Like fourteen hundred a year and gizmos is twenty-one hundred, right? But we don't know if it has the same capacity as gizmos.
I know.
And one of our teachers really uses that heavily in their curriculum and like thirty of his lessons, so. You know, we're thinking of just reducing it and letting the other teachers try the pivot, which is those online labs, which does, yeah, so.
Okay.
And is that non-refundable stipulation, like, in the contract that we sign with them, or is that?
So that would be something we'd have to, perhaps Cecilia and maybe Richard dig and see if they could find that contract. Probably. Well, and this is, I think some of our old paperwork is blocked away and you have to put in a request for it. Because it's not in the building, like our previous work had it put into a place where you have, we have to pay to request our documents.
What kind of documents were you saying?
I'm sure we could get that, but yes, I did ask her point blank if we could just get a refund if that, she said was not an option.
Oh, it seems like there's a need.
Oh, it could definitely be used, I mean, it's coming out of the science. You know, back into the science, she did ask me, they have other platforms like for math and for. History and stuff, but we're already pretty good in those areas, science is a big deal. To our school in our, our last. Five-year strategic plan, and we have, you know, the core and the electives, which are both required in a middle school, and so. It's important.
Not to add to kind of the complexity of this whole decision or anything, but obviously there's like materials and. You know, like things that need to be mailed and delivered, and we need to make those decisions now, there's subscriptions that seem to be like, okay, we just. You know, you just pop online one day and. And pay your bill and you're good to go.
Yep.
Is there, is there an ability to, for us to kind of separate? And kind of focus on the material orders at this point? And then the certain, because we have a bunch, a whole budget meeting here.
And I can certainly go forward with the, I think the stumbling block I've had is. Not having a superintendent to approve the POs and Cecilia kind of like, you know, which I don't blame her. You know, so. I'll do it however you'd like, but I can certainly do more of the material stuff first to make sure it gets shipped, and because we also have our assessment platform. You know, where we do our benchmark testing and stuff, and that's all online, but that will have to be approved by you because I'm pretty much thinking that was over ten thousand, right? Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of these are necessities, but we're just kind of maybe slow rolling a few of them, but I think it's appropriate to like, what needs to be physically delivered here? You know, let's get that.
Okay.
Done and approved and agreed upon, and then we can kind of transition to, that'll give Richard more time to kind of. You know, inform us on what's needed, we'll get a little further through the budget process.
Yeah.
And again, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need any of this stuff, or that we really have a choice, but you know, sometimes it feels good to like. Push that bill off in the future, personally at, at the school board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to get whatever material, just so they have materials actually come.
Yeah, he's got to get that here, and then like, just all you have to do is, you know, hit a credit card online for the subscription, I think that's.
Yeah, she already said on the science kids that they would likely. They would likely be later in September, but that's okay, teachers are okay. Oh, the other thing I forgot to tell you about, so Mystery Science, we have been purchasing for K five. And that subscription ends of, in August twentieth. So Mystery Science is now part of Discovery Ed, so we can use this credit to purchase mature mysteries.
So state didn't purchase that, they didn't, but we will. With our credit.
No, the, the OPI didn't, no.
They didn't, but we can with that credit.
But again, we want to take these. Should we take these all, kind of go through all these and then we circle back, or do you want to take them kind of one by one? I, I do feel like it's important that we, even though if they're not in the prelim budget, a lot of these expenditures. You know, our prelim budget. Is, is balanced, but it's balanced without absolute necessities that we can't operate the school without, so I think. You know, should we just kind of take these, maybe go through these, and then we could circle back and just kind of agree on. The material orders that you could run through Maryland. And Cecilia?
I'm, okay, here, I'm wondering, how soon, how soon are we to get Richard on board? I mean, I, I mean, these, this is the kind of stuff that a superintendent looks at his budget and he's the one who determines. We, the school board's taken on some of this micromanaging that if we get a superintendent, we wouldn't. To do, so I guess I'm. Wondering if.
So on that note.
Yes, please.
We just go, never have you on the, okay, so. There, I guess, do we want, what do we want, the start date is August first or some other date is what she's asking, so are we? It looks like I just kind of need to give her a date for that contract, and then she should have.
Well, I think we could need to give the contract to Richard, we need to have, let him have some reasonable time to digest and. You know, kind of. Discuss it, the first seems pretty quick to me, and, and I, I'd kind of like to. I don't know, some of these decisions, I feel like, you know. We're kind of throwing him into, you know, let's say the fire, but I, I would like to. Kind of as a, make some of these calls, like to, to run the budget, not just like throw him in and say, hey, you gotta decide if you want to make these. Because I feel like just to a degree, it's our elected responsibility to kind of, hey, run and dip into these reserves, you know. And, and I, I guess I'd like to take some of the responsibility for that and those decisions. I think, you know, circling back when we came on, I don't felt, I didn't feel like we had as much control over. Apparently over some of the expenditure allocations. You know, I guess I. You know, hope that we can kind of, through policy changes, et cetera, hopefully kind of. Maybe get our arms around that a little bit from a budgetary perspective, not just a revenues perspective, because I think, you know, that's, you know. I think a more impactful piece of, you know, the school is how you spend the money, not how you, you know, how much money you receive, so. I think we should just have a, have a maybe a. More direct input on that, so, I don't know, I mean, I, I just think it's appropriate with this transition, especially to an interim, like that we take, we take some of the responsibility for. Especially things that are, you got the bare bones necessities right here on the budget, like, hey, these, we've already renewed all these teachers' contracts. We have to pay electricity, we have to pay for heat, you have to pay for water, but some of the. Above and beyond that, some of the decisions, I'd like to take a little bit of ownership in that, at least for the next year, until we. You know, maybe get things kind of reorganized to some degree or, or agreed upon moving forward.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
And by me, I, then they're gonna go to you and ask for approval.
That's just, that's just what I'm getting at.
I mean, what I should go ahead and purchase right now?
Well, that's what I was kind of thinking, because you don't have, you don't technically have superintendent to go to, to make these purchases. So Maryland, you know, as a chair in places, you know, the one who could approve for you these, even these purchases or.
I'd rather speak and talk. Think I'd rather talk a little more of the science over with the superintendent before I do anything.
Okay. That's fine.
But I would, and you know, like the ELA, those are online. Remember the ELA EB academics that Bonnie can speak to, so. But like some of the things that, like the workbooks that elementary needs. Would be nice to get those.
I kind of feel like, I mean, it's back to that point.
So that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, like, if that's what you meant, like, just say, and go ahead and go forward with the. Those mater-, certain materials, you can tell me which ones, and I'll make sure, and then the rest I can.
That's exactly, yeah, and, and obviously with the workbooks, it's a scenario where. You know, as we talked about the last week, it's like, well, do you buy the workbook, or do you go have somebody sit at the copier, copy seven hundred pages, that's ineffective. From a teaching standpoint, and maybe not as durable and, and you can't use from year to year, I, I agree with the workbooks, I mean, we, that's why we're all here, we're all, you know. You know, have kids, grandkids that are coming through school, so we want the teachers to be most effective, so I think that's a reasonable ask and a reasonable spec.
So. I guess I'm stuck on this superintendent start date, um, yes, I mean, I, so, I. I think. And if this is me jumping in very new with like only a partially informed perspective. I, I think we need to be way more diligent, like I agree in our management of the budget, I think we also need to be careful about like not micromanaging. Too much, and I don't know if I'm just not understanding what you're saying, like I think we are hiring a superintendent, and so we have to have faith to a certain extent. They're gonna be able to make those calls. I mean, otherwise, we just set ourselves up as a board for like really getting way too far into the weeds. And. Essentially causing more harm than good, but like. We got into this pickle somehow, and so I think we definitely need to be diligent on watching it, I just, I don't want to see us micromanage too much. And I, I don't know if I'm understanding fully what.
I think that's a good, that's a good counterpoint there, because it is, it is a little. I, I, of my nature, it's a little bit of micromanaged.
Well, we did find ourselves in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, like.
But it, it kind of comes back to just a little bit of, you know, for my, like, you know, it's like you're, you're kind of. New to the board and a little bit of the scenario that you walk into, and you're extra cautious with certain things. Obviously, a lot of our. The majority of our expenses, ninety percent of our expense is related to, you know, teachers and staffing, which is something that we have to approve. Throughout the year on, on that amount. We just need to, you know. Remember as we, as we kind of review, review and approve these staffing hires or replacements through the year, like what that prospective budget position is. And that's, that's a little, that's really what drove the majority of the, the issue that we had through this last school year is we. We got flush on COVID funds and staffing increased, and then the COVID funds. Aren't there anymore, and now you're, now you're in a hole, and you didn't, you didn't adjust your staffing to, you know, adjust to your, your revenues in that sense. And so that's just the scenario that you don't want to be in again. But you're right, at the same token, there's no reason to sit here and micromanage every expense, I just don't want. You know, Richard, a new superintendent, a new interim superintendent to. You know, walk in on day minus five before he's technically, you know, only, you know. So only verbally accepted, but not technically except, you know, legally accepted that he's. That we're deferring these decisions that could potentially be scrutinized, because I think there are decisions right now. At this point, and so I just want to be supportive of that and, and say, hey, if we're gonna spend and overspend. Potentially to a smaller degree, that let's just, I just feel like I would like to vote, or at least express support that. These are things that we need to do right now, and then we'll talk about the subscriptions and the other things that can be deferred into kind of mid-August for the. Formal budget approval until then, but for right now, if we need to get these things ordered, I'd just like to voice my support.
Because, you know, what's, and Richard does have ten thousand dollar, I'm not seeing his. Sure, it's, I'm not sure what it is exactly, so what is it, it's, it's part of the law, then, because the school board did, okay, that the superintendent can. Can at his discretion spend up to ten thousand dollars without school board approval, and that's right in. The bylaws in our. Bylaws, so we ha-, he has got that right now.
Yeah, so I think, see, that's, that's like a little bit of the, like, so that's a little bit of the wrinkle that I go back to, I do agree with that, right? So it's, but it's, it's coming back to. At the beginning of the year, you establish a budget. Right, and so we, we create this budget based on anticipated staffing needs, staffing needs across school. That we all agree to, that we're all kind of representing, trying to represent the community to the best of our ability to, you know, kind of. You know, lay out, you know, receiving input from all of you, but. So they, they can spend ten thousand dollars within, that, that was a little bit of the rub there was, was it based on? They get all the revenues and then. Or are we controlling expenses, and that's what I just wanted to have a little bit, like, from a policy standpoint going forward. I think we should consider kind of having, okay, well, yeah, you can do that, because we don't want to sit here and have to sign checks all day long or whatever, but. It has to be within some sort of. Reasonable variance of the budget, you know, like, you know, so you can't, you know, spend ten thousand dollars on something that's not. You know, entirely not budgeted.
And I think, I think when, you know, through the. The past couple months, we've asked Cecilia about those expenditures in the budget, you know, if they've dedicated the budget. You know, if they've been okay in the budget, go ahead with it, if they're not, then then we're gonna take a look.
When I completely understand through the course of the year, you're gonna have, okay, hey, you know, it was a warm, it was a warm winter. We saved ten thousand dollars on eating the pool, like, well, that money can presumably be used, you know. Somewhere else or be used to put in reserves, and that's completely appropriate, things can be shifted around, oh, we're over a little bit over here, let's, let's reallocate, and that's all fine. It's just kind of, I think some, we should like, at least it's on my list, I think we should. Potentially, uh, well, we should probably consider it, and I'll work on that for our next. Budget meeting, just research that and see if there's some kind of appropriate policy change that we could consider.
We just can't be back in the same situation of being at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, something doesn't fit in what's budgeted, and you gotta kind of figure out where. You're moving things around in the budget to cover those things.
Yeah, when it's, it's a hard decision for us too, because you have to. You have to approve all the staff, which is ninety percent of your expense, before you even have a budget for next year. And. So it's, yeah, so that's what we pushed so hard this year with budgetary expectations and, or maybe really kind of. Aggressive on just like trimming to the bare bones that we could, because we're so concerned with that, you have to basically put the cart before the horse. Uh, in a lot of this, a lot of perspectives, so it's it's a challenging scenario for anybody, especially when you go from this. Scenario where you have all this COVID money flowing in to having it all gone. And that's that just, you know, it's just like lottery players, you know, it's like, how many of them go broke, it's like a lot of them too, because they get too much money and then they. They forget how to save, so.
Um, I do agree, though, we had told Terry that we would give her an answer by the end of the month, and so that stuff, so I think at least if we can get her going on materials to get here. Because I just think we're gonna have a little bit of like time between now and when Richard is fully on, so she probably wants to order materials. Now, rather than waiting.
Well, and as we, as we went through it, I don't think there was really anything that we were like, no, this seems. It looked like an excessive amount, it looked pretty bare bones.
Yeah, I mean, they had the wishlist, which I like, I like the wishlist, I did, I did learn what a clavina was.
So do you just want to run through them then, like, one by one?
I usually have a whole stack.
So um, did we start with the, just the ELA lit budget, that email from Terry or Tina?
Yeah, and that one, like I said, um. It is, it is an online access, I'm not saying we could wait too long, because they'll need to get on to it.
Yeah.
But.
We could approve it with our budget.
Okay.
Mid-August, so it's online, so I I have no issue with it.
And then same.
Uh, so I was on the, was I on, are we on the grammar? So then we're into the science.
Right, which I am just, I'm not, I don't need anything that lived there yet, I'm gonna keep working on that and working on the grant, and then I. I'm sure by the time Richard's on, I can visit with him.
Okay, so we're good on like the uh science materials for the time being through the fourth year, okay, great. And so I think the next one's music.
He's the one that broke hers up. Her wishlist and what she needs.
And these are all hard materials?
Or yes.
Physical materials.
Yeah.
This is her wishful.
Yeah, the wishlist.
She does such a good job.
And, you know, this brings me to talking about the wishlist, you know, when I was looking at all the grant possibilities, I. I know we have policy about grants applying and stuff, but. I don't, I'm not really aware of procedures, and so I felt really uncomfortable. Applying for too many, because I know teachers are go-getters, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to apply for something that another teacher is gonna be. Or has typically applied for, so. And, you know, Richard's here to hear this and letting you guys know, I think we need some procedures on. Use it, applying for grants, so that either there's a point person or just it's on file with the clerk or something, so that you don't overlap, I don't want to compete. With someone from my same school.
Right, yeah, that is a really good idea.
But I could, you know, there are probably things like that that we can talk about, when the music is well.
Do you have any comment on this music stuff then?
No, I know that those are all things she needs.
Okay.
Um, for the school year. And it is a growing program, it had been decimated by COVID and um she's doing an amazing job.
She does.
Needs and things like that. So that would be the fourteen fifty five.
That's great, yeah, I I think that's, I mean, I would say I think that's reasonable, I think it's. I think it's also like just putting a little reminder, I think these are the programs that we should just remember. Um, in our marketing of the Jennifer Levy, just how to kind of expand and enhance these type of programs. Because I think there's a lot of people who really value these, just these enhancement educational opportunities, because that's, that's.
Which one are you on now? And I, and Connie is here this time. To help answer the questions, um, we had talked about. Those first, well, the first one is the curriculum that um. The kindergarten uses the five fourteen, and then the other three were workbooks needed for their. Um, ELA that they use, and then the reading wonders, grade three, the readers and things like that. I don't know if you can explain a little better why that was a kind of on the fence. That were kind of on the fence with the level readers.
Oh, that was the one that I talked about, about, so, yeah. Yeah, well, it has to do with, um, because now we won't have as many classrooms in third grade again, so. They were just saying, we really don't need that this year, so.
So then if I ordered the first four line items, then it comes to that forty-two eighty at the bottom.
And then the uh, the science.
Yeah, you can cross that out, because, yeah.
That's the, that's the discovery.
That's what we would need for next year potentially, but we'll wait and see.
That's how you make us feel good. Is this a strategic worksheet here?
Okay, I'll get those first four lines ordered.
You can add a board therapist.
Um, elementary K four title.
And this was the one that, the workbook.
The teacher presentation kits on those two with the circles, we had talked about potentially decreasing by one. But then there's also that case of possibly even happen to go to the copy machine for teacher presentation kits.
Yeah, and technically, we're not even supposed to do that, because. But, so that's what I was trying to, yeah. And you do need two then in grade two, is that right? Yes, um. And it also depends a lot on how many pairs we have, though, so I don't know where we were at with our pair. But, you know, we run several groups for each grade level, so then I need multiple teacher additions, but we're not hiring as many pairs, then I won't. I don't know where we're at.
I don't, I don't think we'll be hiring less pairs than we have right now.
So we lost, and I know middle school was lower, but we lost two at the end of the year. So where are we?
I think we're putting those two back on, that's just for the elementary.
Just for the elementary, so elementary will keep what they have. Because then we would be.
Is that correct, Richard?
Because we lost Paula, we lost Heather.
Yeah, and so we, we agreed, those were in kind of our bare bones budget, so we're gonna bring them back on.
Okay. So then, middle school was one?
I don't recall the split between those.
That's what I.
Okay.
Yep.
So then you would need both of those, okay.
And these, these, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Was, so you had somebody lined up that was a great candidate, I'm assuming that would be two. Okay, and that would cover elementary then?
Yes.
Okay.
What about middle school?
I mean, I know Tina makes a call.
We interviewed, and we have one, do you, that we're waiting on an answer back.
So we may have our parents still.
And so these, these uh, from the teacher material standpoint, there, you can utilize those multiple, right? So it's just the student materials, because they're filling out, they're filling out.
And some of the student materials are over and over too, I I don't use a lot of workbooks in the title. So, like, student storybooks and stuff, those are used over and over too.
Okay, great, yeah, and I mean, I obviously, I think titles, you know, important, allocate resources to. Especially to make teaching most effective, there are some.
Okay, so that's the five thousand at the bottom.
So you think you're gonna need the total five thousand with the extra two thirds?
And that's good, I mean, that's, that's where you want to put your support too.
And then the other one was two pages, the special ed um for K eight. And then the total on that was on the second page, is on the second page, the sixty-nine hundred. Those are the same thing, you can look through and see if it's a um workbook. There's textbook. And then teacher's editions are the ones that are used over and over.
They use a lot more workbooks instead than we do title, because they really need to have access to the documents to be able to. Bring them to meetings and see, we can, we can do a lot of our data collection and just have it in charts, but that really needs to be able to keep that on.
So this, this, this one with the language teacher edition volume two. It for ninety dollars, so you're gonna buy eight of them for seven hundred and twenty dollars, is that right?
Let me see where we're.
Am I getting that, that's about the third one up in the bottom, Jerry?
Yeah, because they're getting seven, so it's probably ninety per piece of seven twenty. Is that?
Well, yeah, because I'm looking at it. Well, that's interesting. I'm looking at volume one, and it says seventh grade, but then the other one says seven twenty. No, being a teacher addition, I'm sure she just needs one, so I'll put a question mark and check with her.
Yeah.
Oh, that, wait, I'm right here, she's here. I'm I'm assuming then this teacher addition for, where you have volume one needs one for ninety, volume two, you also just need one. Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, Marilyn's, you know, ran the books before.
We shared our teacher's edition, sure, so that's why, so we were hoping that we could each have one.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't need seven.
No, no, I don't know where seven can.
Uh, we're just continuing on like the. The Maryland route here with math and stuff, like, the next line, seven times twenty is a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty.
There you go.
Oh, that's the grade level.
Oh, I got you, oh, great. Oh, I'm, I'm, okay, so. Eight times twenty.
I would hope the spreadsheet wouldn't get her on. So you do need eight for seventh grade, though, when it comes to student, right?
Yes, yes.
And those are all like hard materials on that?
Yes, yes. We were copying a lot last year, and so. It's nice that they can have.
I think it's just kind of a, I I just, I don't know, I feel like with the copy, and it's just like a, it's like a. Black hole you get down, where you're just like, you're copying things and you're wasting. And your guys is precious time, and you're, it's, I don't know if you're really saving any money or making the educational experience any better. Yeah, so I I think it's important, we need the workbooks, we need to. We need to try to get the real, you know, version, I mean, they have economies of scale too, so. Um, I think that's an important, important thing, I can only imagine like flipping the page and copying.
The only hard one is the teacher's mission. Because it's like the big size. Back there like four times, and tape it together. And then make those copies for your parents.
But I honestly, I just think, I just think it's, I know it's.
And and this is, and I think we've talked about it, what, uh, the last meeting, what we talked about, the budget, is that this is the special education students core. Curriculum, yeah, so this, this is. Yeah, you know, what they need. To learn their math and their ELA, and their writing.
We couldn't all that then?
Yeah, I I agree with all that, obviously, just for the.
I just adjust for that one.
Uh, TCI, that's the history. America's Past Student Journal, is that where you're at? So the first two lines are the workbooks, the second two lines are the licenses.
So can we just do work for us for now and hold off on the licenses?
So the license, it's just a online license then for additional?
Yeah, it's the, so the teachers have a license for them, there's actually not a hard copy teacher book available. They get it, they have to have it online, and then. The student license is to be able to um access activities and different things online as well, yeah.
And you feel pretty good on numbers that you're ordering with students?
Yes, yep, and I can. I think I even just looked again in um. Fifth grade is like eighty-eight, eighty-nine, but we like to leave a cushion, and they have like three or four left from last year. I mean, we do keep it tight, but like five or so in case for the kid that moves in or.
Did they refund that amount if it doesn't get used?
Oh, for the licenses, you mean, or for the workbook?
For all of it. Workbooks, they probably wouldn't refund.
We just carry over to the next year and account for that.
Okay.
Yeah, about the licenses, the licenses, I believe those came in groups of. Ten or twenty, so you just get as close as you can.
So maybe we hold off on the licenses till we know the exact numbers.
Okay.
Seems good.
And then. It looks like too, if you buy it for two years, it's discounted, is that right?
Yeah.
And have we used this program for a long time?
This would be. This would be our third year for the fifth grade using it. Six and seven to use it longer, they do like it. So that, um, yeah. Like I said, I'll get the workbooks, we can talk later about the licenses.
Let's discuss that, because I might be, but then you've got kind of like forecast numbers and stuff.
We've been pretty consistent, you know, with the last few grade levels coming through, and we can kind of look ahead to what is coming up.
If you have a recommendation.
Yeah, okay, um, and then the typing master, I can also put that to the side with, or typetastic with the science, because it's all online.
Okay.
I thought people are just gonna like talk at the computer and have it type out.
It's on, oh no, I don't even know. Well. It's in your title, your, your title. Includes your.
Okay, I have a small change on the number where I'll hold that back in the elementary title. We just had a training last week and I think I was investing some teachers addition that are like two hundred and eighty-six dollars. And, um, so at the, it's the last three, the C D M E teachers addition. And at the training, we found out that we can do that as an online addition like what Terry was talking about, so. We will not go over the amount, we may be under, so.
It'll be not ordering those thirty, wait.
And then we have typecast stickers up there.
If we can get the language ones online for the teacher's addition, that would be the best. Because.
I'm gonna look at that.
Yeah. Because you know, we, we, um, carry them a lot back and forth from our houses, they're huge. And, um, the online is the most, is the, the most efficient. Because we have all of our math online like that and not the language arts because the license ran out. So then you, if it was cheaper to do the.
So those are the two that were ninety dollars each?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Yeah, that would be awesome, because then the parents also can look online and prep before. Then having to find the big books.
Yeah, that's great.
We're generally like a one-year subscription or six-year subscription, but that way at least pushes it out. That was it then, right, Terry?
You know anything else? I, yeah, we need to. I'm anxious to get Richard on board and so I, I would like to, I, I hate to do this. By next Monday. Four, five Mondays in a row, but, um, if we did get that. Get, he had given a contact to him and each of us, so we take a look at it. And maybe we'll keep that contract by next Monday, just the thirty-first of July. So he'd get on, we'd have him on board by the first of August and I, I guess I would like to see that happen. Because it looks like we, you know, for Deborah, we've got the contract, we get that, I mean, with that. Want to put the date in there and if we just make August first the beginning of the contract, right? And then we can okay it on the thirty-first and, and Richard could be on board on the verge. I'd like to see that happen. So should we have another meeting?
For what first with anticipa is to make sure and give Richard a little bit of time, just to make sure that we can have it all done by that day.
Sure, okay, let's, um, okay, let's, then we won't set a firm date. That you, we're gonna have to set a date for is beginning though.
So we have to, we have to. Presumably, do we approve the contract? First, or does he approve the contract first? Or, you know, does he agree to it and then we approve it? I, that's, that's a question like from a time standpoint.
Yeah, I guess if we, I can ask.
If we. We, we present, we presented to him. So, so we have to have, we, we, we all have to get together. And, and have a contract that we present to him and we decided pretty much already that it would be. The amount on Cindy's whole contract. That we would have in P S B A. With correct dates in and eliminate some of the glitches in Cindy's contract and add in that he could have his. Principal job back at the end of the interim period if we showed how good that worked. So we told, told Deborah to make those changes, so I guess we've really come to grips with what we wanted on that contract. So what our position is then, once Deborah gets that written up, it's so that the legalese is correct. That we present that to Richard and then he takes a look at, looks at it and sees he is okay with it.
As long as he's okay working seventy hours a week. Minimum.
But I, yeah, so I don't know, you know, I don't know if we need to get there and okay the contract before we, because I think we're pretty much already. If then unless anybody.
Well, I think you can, I think you can op, you can, like, on, on those terms, you can offer it to him and then as long as, you know, he's agreeable, we can approve it. Like said on, on Monday and maybe we can have an ex- expedited meeting. I don't know if there's a better time. That works for people or, I mean, I'm finding people calling in or something, obviously they're kind of hammering these meetings through the summer, so. But if, if it's, if we can just put that.
That's all. As I say that and then. Sometimes something comes up because I know Phil has a janitor, I think he wants to hire some, I mean. But that needs to go through Richard too, so no, I think we could just make it. And I, let's go with five.
I don't think so.
So keep with me, you have any time?
I mean, I just, so I am shooting. Let's see, on thirty-first, we're like all the way over in East Glacier filming and I won't be back until like eight that night, so.
Do you wanna just?
You can do it without me, which like I'm.
Yeah, it's just maybe consolidate and like unless you.
We have, we, you know, we have a forum with. If, if, if you.
I'm totally okay with that.
Sure.
Okay, as long as.
I mean, as much as I love writing my name.
Can we do it for them too?
As long as I remember.
Just to let you know, I have a plane coming back in Denver at two o'clock that day, so I can land and quickly get here.
Maybe, maybe, should we give him another little bit of time?
Let's get the pressure on.
You, uh, but you missed this plane though, three to Tuesday then? Tuesday at four?
That's fine.
That's good. Would you be able to do that?
We're filming that day too.
I can start filming.
Right? No, it's like, it's, it's heavy.
As long as you don't have an issue.
And if something happens.
Sure, I can keep in contact.
Well, he didn't, yeah. Okay, let's.
I'm fine with Monday or Tuesday, just whatever you think is better.
Then, and Laurel, you're not gonna be, we make it either day, right?
Doesn't look like it, if that changes, I can, I'll let, I'll let you know, but right now we have things booked.
But if, if we made it, if we, if we went best five o'clock, five thirty on Monday, it, it take your. Problem, how to picture of the credit. And I, I guess I'd go with five thirty on Monday again and, and a short meeting.
Sure.
And, and Richard should be, and unless you have a plane glitch and.
Yeah.
He attend via phone soon.
Could he?
Yeah, he has to sign in physically.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion?
Oh, 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 okay, quick question, um. Are we clear moving forward, like one thing that's kind of come up just from people that I know out in the community, teachers, et cetera? We haven't communicated what the heck happened with the levy. And I know that there's limits on what can be communicated, but. Like, if we're gonna go to voters with an ask later, I think we're gonna have to have an explanation or like something that we say. Well, we did it our.
I thought we did.
Well, at our meetings, but.
Yeah, but you're right, like in the end, there's some on the marketing materials for the next one, cuz I think people, like, you know, and you get that a lot, it's people. You run a levy and then, um, people assume a pass, passed and then they kind of think you're asking for even more. So I think we. Signal that like.
Yeah, I mean, is everyone here clear on what happened?
Yeah.
Or not so much? What was, what happened?
Yeah, I mean, cuz effectively, the deadline for establishing a levy about was missed. And work on the board, we're all, you know, have shared the blame and superintendent advised us and it didn't come together correctly, so. But. You know, I think, I think maybe we could do just some, you know, as we kind of plan towards next year, some. You know, preemptive marketing campaign, obviously, I think we're gonna have to be really thoughtful and strategic on how we market it, but maybe we could just speak to. Um, as, as everybody says, like, the, what the last general fund levy we passed was X to this. Here, let's show like the list of every time the community said no. Um, or, or say, hey, here's the last, you know. You know, the last one, just to make sure like, hey, this, this, you know, or this one was rescinded, you could even say rescinded. And then we could, uh. Kind of maybe do that or something like with local marketing, just like, I, I agree with you cuz we did, we didn't get a lot of negative feedback, but I assume that there's some. Some, a lot of, a lot of.
I think.
Questions.
We got more than we saw.
Yeah, exactly, I think there's more than what we saw.
Office saw a lot of negative feedback, I think those office girls. I, I mean, they. And I, as a board, we were in a position at that point where we could not say much. It, 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 once things become a legal pro, a legal issue, you're, you cannot say.
Well, and I just like to add, like, as a board member, you're, you don't, you, the prerequisite to be a board member is not that you are a lawyer. You know, skilled in, you know, school finance, you know, it's like, we're, we're community members, we're parents, we're. We're here trying to do things in our, you know, in good faith for the best interest of the school, but we're not, we're not. You know, skilled in the Montana's constitution and all policies and procedures related to school finance. So there's a lot for us to learn over time too, and so we rely heavily on, um, you know, the advice we receive from other people. Sometimes that's, sometimes it puts you in the right spot, sometimes it doesn't, we've definitely, um, re-engaged very. Um, actively with M T S B A, which I think has been a good, um, a good, you know, great source for us, just to, just as a double check. It's worth the expense, um, just to make sure things like this don't happen again. And at the end of the day, I mean, we got, you know, we did get. You know, a lot of criticism for, obviously, we're not here to waste anybody's money or anybody's time, but the expense that was. The expense lost there through the, um, rescinded balances was not nearly as great as the. Um, kind of obviously the opportunity that we could have maybe had with, with the. You know, if the levy passed, it, it was not, you know, I know it's three thousand odd dollars, but it's not, it's not a mission critical. Um, expense associated with throwing those, it's, it's not, nothing we want to throw away or not spend wisely, but it's not, uh. It was not a, you know, school critical error in, in, in. This focus of that expense, obviously, we need to smooth it over at the community and make sure that they're, they're aware of what hap. Or at least aware that it didn't pass and, um, you know, and, uh. Again, for kind of the same thing year two and.
My only concern is if we wait too far down the road, then we're parrying the ass with the failure. And like maybe the sour grapes that kind of go with that versus addressing it at the start of the school year, like. Come up with something simple, but like giving some people some answers. Let it digest with the fact of like, you know, we made a mistake or mistakes were made. And, you know, like. Yes, me, no, like a hundred percent, I wasn't on the board, it's me. Um, Laurel did it and then just knowing that like, you know, West Valley isn't seriously. Like, I think people need to understand at the beginning of the school year, we're in a predicament, a predicament and we're gonna have to levy. You know, if we're gonna continue to deliver quality education for kids, we have to levy, um, you know, and I, I think. On top of that, another thing we need to do is a simple letter to teachers, you know, from us, like, I don't know that. That's something that we need the superintendent to voice for, I mean, he's gonna, or Richard's gonna have to tell the story anyway, but like from us of like, hey. We're in a tight space, like know that we are behind you, know that we support you, we care, we're here to listen. But like, this year's gonna be a tight year.
Yeah, there's, there's a, I, I agree with you on the timing, there's a little bit, there's like a little bit of an art, I think there between. Um, there's a lot of angst about the property tax reappraisals, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Like everybody's get like, you know, hammered with these, these pre-let bills.
But I, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of people out there, like I know that there's a lot of people out there with questions that haven't been answered.
Well, and I saw an article too about the property tax increase where one of the legislators blamed it on a school. Blatantly false. That's, yeah, that's not even.
I'm, okay, I've got an opportunity to speak to Hillary Mappuson. Um, she called, yes, today, yesterday, left, or is this today, left a message. Cuz she's, she don't want to know what we did about the superintendent. Right, so, and I, I'm glad to be able to tell her. Um, but what I'm thinking is that an opportunity then to say, I bet. Do we wanna color that article with something about the levy on?
I think that'd be okay.
I don't know, I, you know, it just, if, if, if we just put because of that, really. It was because of a bunch of unfortunate circumstances. That the levy, you know, we had or we had, we had to cancel our levy election. But that does not mean that we don't need the money for next year, is that the message we wanna send out or not?
I mean, I, I think.
You never know what she's gonna write anyway.
They can't, they can't write anything, you know.
They already did an article on that, I'd probably just leave it with.
I don't care that.
And then maybe if we just can get what these questions are, maybe we could create like a webpage with these.
There you go.
With whatever these questions are out there and then we at least have somewhere to like direct.
Cuz we, you know, we're not really trying to, we weren't trying to hide anything. Well, you know.
We already couldn't say.
We missed deadlines, screwed us up, we took responsibility for it. Right or wrong, and we, I mean, and we going forward. We just got put there behind us, but I totally agree that if they don't, if they think they've already passed the levy or they have questions, what that gap is about, maybe. Cuz they did get.
That's a good point, I think it just needs to be, you need to address it in our marketing for next year very clearly and I hope, like I said, hopefully kind of. We can like get the right spot ahead of running the levy, so it's, you know, Christmas, everybody's happy.
And it's due Christmas because right.
Christmas cards.
Everybody's pretty angry about that. If we do a Christmas, um, Christmas postcard.
So this is the section in the article. Billings. It said, what you have to keep in mind, appraisals are used to allocate tax, the local governments and schools then set their budget that requires a certain tax level. Those taxes have been allocated based on that appraisal. So, uh, there goes not to stay, in fact, your appraisals could go down, your taxes could still go up depending on what schools and the local governments decide to do with their budget.
Oh, you wish. Oh, you wish.
Oh. I hope that doesn't get reprinted in the internet, that one.
Great hurts, impulsive.
That was in a billing paper. That's false information.
Yeah, so it's, you focus on what's going on in your local governments and your schools. Eighty-five percent of your property taxes go to the local governments and schools, so Montana taxpayers concerned about property taxes, you just start attending those meetings the next year. That's where we are. Yeah, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're up against.
Well, the challenge is, that's, that's, that's so misleading, and I mean, it's not entirely untrue, but it's very misleading in, in regards to how how, you know, again, we're, we're funded on a per pupil basis.
Right.
It's, we don't set how much we.
Yeah, you don't decide.
And we don't, you know, we don't decide this, we have, you know, the, the few things that we decide on are you know, uh, you know, what the transportation expense will be.
Right.
Which is based on getting the students to school, which is, is pretty reasonable, but, so that, yeah, it's just very misleading that it, it indicates that we have some arbitrary ability to say we're gonna get, you know, X amount per student, we don't decide that, the state decides that, so I mean, that's, you know, if you're, if you're indicating that, they're deciding what we give per pupil, not, not in school, so.
Did anybody go to that kind of meeting they had where they met with some state official, and one of the commissioners, I think, Mr. Andrew Baddell, went and talked about the, the property tax increase, let everybody go and grab about it, did, did anybody go to that? They said they had quite a few people there, I just wonder if something like that came up at that meeting, I didn't go either, but it was an opportunity to come and listen to the state explain why your property taxes went up so much. And then the county commissioner was there too, and it was supposed to be like an open forum where people could just.
My father-in-law went to that.
Did he?
Said that uh, not a lot of people, not a lot of the elected officials spoke up, except Courtney Springer. Um, was willing to be the first one to kind of get bulleted and.
Yeah.
Crowd's pretty upset, but he didn't mention anything specific to schools.
The schools.
Because he knows that.
Okay, maybe, I mean, that whole conversation could then had in schools with it, and not brought up, would have, I mean, they didn't need to bring schools up in that conversation, but I just.
Well, I mean, I mean technically, so technically, if everybody's property appreciated at the same amount across the entire state and that no local government or school budget increased at all, then they would adjust the mill levies down presumably to balance the budget, and we would all, we would all have the same effective tax bill, but I think we all understand that that's not the reality of what's gonna happen. But it's just, it seems imprudent, I think, as you said, for somebody to blame blame this increase and the ultimate fact that it's likely that the levies don't go down to kind of offset the assessed valuation increase, just seems imprudent to throw schools in there when ultimately the vast, vast ninety plus, a hundred percent of our funding effectively is based on what the state will allocate back to us on that per pupil basis, so.
Did they increase the allocation amount?
Right, that's, I think, what's gonna have to happen eventually, is they're gonna have to change the formula for how it's going, because it's not just us that it's in this.
Right.
Pickle, except for, I mean, every to some extent, I mean, there is definitely, yeah. I guess in scale there.
But it's a challenge with the, the, I mean, we're, we thought it was bad in May when we were gonna run it before, and now I just, I don't know if we're really in and the climate right now, it's worse.
Like I said, you have a worse possible time.
Yeah, so I just, I just hope some of this kind of settles down before it gets to next year, that we have a little better climate.
And it's an election here too, twenty twenty-four, so.
Yeah.
Kind of start to, you know, I mean, you just had.
It's gonna be a great year.
Well, I'll make another motion to adjourn.
Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
I.
All of them.